All right. Good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, October 30th at nine AM. Start our work session. Start off in here. Is there anybody from the public that has anything to weigh in on? Online, anybody online have any questions or concerns about the agenda today? Okay. Rebecca?
I think she's on the other one.
I think I see her up there.
Rebecca, you're currently muted if you're there.
I'm unmuted. There you go. Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, is Amy in the room also?
No, ma'am.
No, she's not.
Okay. Gotcha. I just was wondering if I messed it up at all. I was wondering if she could speak on behalf at all, but my question for the commissioners today was Carmen, she has been working under a partial stipend. When I was brought into the extension office, they gave her a like a two-step increase while she was working under the capacity of doing additional work. And when her review came up at her annual, I had talked to her about not, she isn't doing additional work per se, but where the amount of where her raise would be with her step, because we did that. So with the compensation study change in the meantime, it would be where the step would be for her raise, for her to just continue to stay. And that's where it says two steps. So it's not an increase at all in pay for her. It would just stay the same. Did that make that confusing for you guys?
Yeah, I think I would say is I would have a conversation with Will and I don't know my outline here, Will. Kind of chat with you about that and have you vet the situation and then come back to us.
Okay, no problem.
I'm happy to chat with Rebecca about that.
Yeah, just kind of get the plans on that and then we can have, you know.
No problem.
There's budget there. If there's, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be kind of asked. I'm not saying that to try and say no. I just think that's something that I'd like kind of well work through and then give us a little presentation. I'd be happy for you to be part of the presentation if you'd like to be.
Yes, no problem. I did speak with Jamie and it is within budget for her to continue on with that amount. And so that was something that I did look at prior to sending it on and then had asked Amy also. And so I can definitely speak with Will first.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it. I just think we need to go through the proper channels and
Absolutely. Thank you.
All righty. Well, thank you so much.
No problem.
Brad, you on the phone?
Yeah, I'm gonna cover this for Brad. So Brad has appointed James Danaher to the road supervisor position. We have a PA that's ready to go. I'm just, we're just here today to ask for the board to ratify that appointment, or I guess more put it differently, I'm looking for authority to sign that PA for the promotion from the board. So asking, asking for that approval today from the board to sign the sign the PA. And then on a related, related note, with the appointment of James to the road supervisor position, Brad needs to make some rearrangements to his org chart for the road department. So there's a couple of full-time employee positions that are full right now that he does not need to fill. So he'd like to he'd like to hire an additional mechanic and an additional driver and eliminate the two positions. There's an office assistant position and a fleet manager position. We've got some conversations about the manager position coming out of the road department. So he'd like to get rid of those, those two positions and hire an additional mechanic and a additional driver. So there'll be some changes to the org chart for the road, road department. It should all fall within budget to make those changes because we're eliminating the two FTEs. I guess my question to the board this morning is what kind of steps you guys would like to see taken to kind of ratify that or confirm that change to the order chart? Is that something you'd like us to bring back in a more formal presentation? Is it okay if I just work with Brad to kind of update that? You know, the org chart gets presented in the budget document every year. So obviously we'll update it if that one is not real clear on what steps you'd like to see us take to kind of make those changes because the org chart is, is within the budget document and it shows those two positions that we're going to pull out and reassign different positions. Jamie, did you have anything you wanted to?
Yeah, I think I'm very comfortable with you moving forward. I appreciate having the conversation before you do that. But yeah, I think just go forward.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good step forward.
Ms. Remack?
Gee, is that mine?
Is she?
Top left. Suzie, you're talking, you're muted.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm fine with what Brian and Seth, I'm fine with that.
Listen, I so yes, then the only ask here today is that you guys give me the authority to sign the PA for James. I'm sweeping the floor with that.
Yes, yeah, we have the authority. Do you need motion or do you miss? I vote that we will all conversation sign.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. I don't know what's wrong with my video.
Looks like a, like a bishop.
I do. I'm, I'm not quite sure. Even Ann couldn't get it fixed. I'll just go back to being S. Remack.
At least, at least it's not a talking cat.
There you go.
All right. Anything else before we move on? Okay, Katie?
She's online as well.
Good morning. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Excellent. Um, I have the 13th amendment to the Oregon Health Authority local public health contract. It's, it's a busy one. A lot of changes are reflected. There's actually two fiscal years that are being amended and that are reflected as being amended in this contract. So there was a lot of reconciling accounts for fiscal year 24 in this document. Everything was as anticipated, I think. So one of the things is that some of these program elements, if it's showing a decrease in fiscal year 24, some of those decreases are then turned around and shown as an increase in fiscal year 25 because those funds roll over within the biennium. There are a couple program elements that do not roll over. So our PE 1201, which is Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Response, and then overdose prevention is PE 62. Those are both ones that don't roll over. We were underspent due to those positions not being filled. So we didn't have the staffing expenses so that being underspent in those budgets was anticipated. The Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Response funding that doesn't necessarily roll over directly to us, we will get another allocation because they combine all underspent funds from last fiscal year and then reallocate them. So we just won't see a one-to-one dollar rollover, but we will see an additional award for this fiscal year in that program element at another date, another amendment. The, so then in fiscal year 25, you see the funds that rolled over from fiscal year 24. A couple of the ones that were unexpected are the a couple of the COVID budgets. They've extended the timeframe through 2026, June of 26, that we're able to spend those. So we'll continue to see those funds roll over. And it's around a hundred thousand dollars total. So that's helpful, certainly helpful for this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year. And then we received an additional 99,482 that we did not originally budget for this fiscal year. It's state allocated funds from the opioid settlement board that they voted to pass through to local jurisdictions for prevention efforts, which is excellent. And again, a a dollar amount that we did not anticipate. So we didn't budget for it this fiscal year. It will roll over in the next fiscal year, which is helpful as well. So the team is putting together plans to use those funds. I think those are the big ones. But if there's any additional questions, I'm happy to answer or speak to.
No, I'm good.
I'm good. No questions. Thank you.
And you're fine to go to the next work, next court meeting or?
Yeah, yes, that would be totally fine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Kelly?
Hey, good morning. So what I have this morning is a, I need a signature for a core grant, which is a state grant system that supports our runway project. It's $250,000. The agreement, I believe, should be in your packet or was sent over. So just looking for signatures on that. The project is right now, the discussion is to start on the 11th. Start tearing up the runway and moving, moving dirt. So anyway, looking for a signature on this agreement. And this, this can happen whenever. It can be next week also. If need be.
Well, great. I know you've put a lot of work into this. It's, it's great to finally be in a place where we're on the ground doing some work.
Yeah, and it's all, it's all coming together. So yeah, it's exciting.
Good job. Thanks, Kelly.
All right. Thank you.
Will?
Yeah, this morning in your packet is a proposal from Parametrics to complete the Transportation Safety Action Plan project. As you might recall, we have a grant from the federal government to complete this this project. We had, we put the project out for, through an RFP process. We got one response that was from Parametrics. They put together a very thorough, very thorough proposal. Parametrics also happens to be the consultant that is doing our transportation system plan. So they have a lot of knowledge already about the community's needs and some of the challenges we're facing with growth. So I'm, I'm just kind of here to recommend that we nominate them as a proposal that kind of best fits the county's needs at this time. With the court's approval, county legal staff will move forward with negotiating final contract with Parametrics for that project. I think the timing's great because this will allow us to with Parametrics, work through the transportation system plan and then come back with an appendix to attach to the TSP that will be the safety action plan. So safety action plan allows us to take a much deeper dive into some of the safety issues we're facing on, on our county roads and state highways and once that's in place, it should open up a number of floors for additional grants to implement that plan and actually get construction money to assist with some of those safety issues. So just here to ask you guys to nominate them as successful proposal and then we'll move forward with negotiating the contract.
That's good. Yeah.
Is this okay to move to consent agenda, Will?
Yeah, I'm fine if you guys look for that to be on consent agenda. Well, so this is, there's nothing to be signed today. My, my recommendation would be just to have a motion today to nominate them as well said. There's no documents to be signed. All it's going to do is, is make me go negotiate with them to refine the scope and to get their pricing. And then we bring a final contract back for execution at regular meeting.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Katrina?
And Randy.
Good morning. So we are here today with the Community Development September Update and Report. Let Randy go ahead and start with the building.
So not a ton. Twenty new houses under, we issued 139 other residential.
You say 20 new houses?
Yeah. Yeah, 20 houses, 139 other type residential permits, 19 commercial permits. So we did almost 200 permits September. Which if you look at year-to-date comparison, we're a few permits above last year for the same time. Still running reasonably close to the same permits as 2023. Currently 202 houses under construction, 736 other associated residential permits that we're actively working on. And 247 commercial permits as of date, you know, the total. So that's the workload that the staff is, you know, coordinating inspections, performing inspections, planning, use that type of thing. I'm still running about 1,000 inspections a month for the team, which those, you have to just daily site visits, it's thousands of projects, inspecting those related permits. Not a ton. Commercial slowing down a little bit. Of course, it's getting in the winter. Everything kind of slows a little bit this time of year and it is hunting season. So we're considerably slower this week and should probably be for the next week or two while everybody's out hunting, which is good because we also have a staff that hunts, so. Other than that, you can see the bigger projects. We're still working with CCO 56 and their emergency radio response coverage up there. We've got an agreement going with Meta themselves and Russ. Try to get their radio response coverage up and going. There's some things going on with the repeaters that they're sending them instead of to the station. They're kind of, kind of bouncing around. So they're looking at some options to put a repeater up there on the city's water tower that way and transition into a local station that in the event there are an event at either one of those larger campuses that it goes straight to the fire response, emergency personnel folks. Other than that, we're wrapping up most of the larger commercial projects. Like you guys know, the Justice Center's done. We've wrapped up the H occupancies up on the hill as well. Old Ag is almost there. I don't know if you guys had asked about that one. That one's near completion. We do a final there. The apartments is the next big one coming. That should keep us busy all hopefully this winter. They've got their underground permits issued. We're still discussing some of their designs. Fortunately, there are the buildings they should actually building permits for those larger apartment buildings, but I think that's about it for the building side.
Right. Just one on the matter, shall we?
It is. Yep. See, they have all the site work. Site work. They got the roads coming in and then the underground package for the sewer water. They do have their clubhouse done. They've had it done for some time, but there's been discussion on their design of some of the larger buildings and how they're designed. And there's some discussions going on with their architect back and forth since like May. We've been waiting on comments since May. Of course, they're wanting their permits like tomorrow, but we've been waiting since May. So it's going to be a pretty complex thing, I think.
Yes.
It is. And they're, they're very large buildings. Like I said, it'd be the first type 5A construction that the department's done, but there's certain fire protection measures that have to be met and in place with fire antlers and fire ratings and some of their plans in the, in the view, in our view, did not meet the requirements. And so that's kind of it'd be a substantial cost to protect those to a 5A type construction. So we're just waiting to hear back from what they want to do there. Are there any celebration lanes, right-hand turn lanes, or any kind of going on that? That I don't know. That would have been with ODOT and probably the city because I think that's yeah, I would, I would hope so because that's going to be considerable amount of traffic. So, but that would be prior to us. We just take them from the buildings and so.
So on the planning side, they were a little bit slower application wise this month, but overall this first quarter has been pretty steady. So it's nice to see that in compared to last couple of years where we've seen a bit of a decline, we're starting to level out a little bit. They had 14 site plan review applications. So those are all associated with some type of construction, whether it's replacing, adding accessory structures, building a new house. So that's good to see. I think you guys have been pretty involved with some of the bigger applications or will be here. The Pikecrest subdivision was approved at planning permission meeting. And you guys have been involved in like Sunshine for their hearing process. At the city, there's the, you probably saw on the last report actually, but that 20-unit duplex complex that's coming in off Laughlin. That went through the approval process with the city and we actually just received nine of the 10 building applications yesterday. So that'll be moving ahead. Will, do you want to touch base on any of the larger long-term projects we've got going, DOD or?
Yeah, I can just quickly. So Department of Defense Grant, we talked about this in the past. We had a work session last week with the Planning Commission to discuss some of the work we're hoping to accomplish through that, that grant opportunity and buyers helping us with, you know, as a consultant on that project. So we'll start to move forward more earnestly in first quarter of 2025 on that project. TSP, as you guys know, we had open houses. Well, we had an open house last night. We have another open house this evening. The one, this evening will be up to you in a per canyon. We had a pretty good turnout last night for the Palview Open House and final count was among 49 range. So you know, based on past comments, the consultant has made about those types of open houses. That's a really good, really good turnout. So glad to see our community engaged and providing feedback on, on the TSP. Another project we are working on is an update to our floodplain management code section. There's the bigger conversation in terms of what FEMA is trying to force us to do right now, but there's also a model code that the state has had for a few years now that the city has adopted and to kind of bring us in alignment more with what the city is doing in terms of floodplain where we had a work session last week with the planning commission on that as well. And we're going to look to bring our floodplain management code up to date a little bit. It does not require a measure 56 notice or anything along those lines. So it's, we're not taking, we shouldn't be taking any, any rights away from, from folks. It's more about how can we better manage it from our side? Kind of attempts to clean things up. So I don't know if you, I know you've been involved in that as well, Katrina. So if you have anything to?
Yeah, not really anything on that, but on the, the FEMA side of things, Katie McDonald and I are both doing workshops. I think she's doing one today. I'm doing a couple next week, kind of looking at those implementation measures that they're trying to push forward and that we need to be looking at choosing one by December 1st. So hopefully after we complete those workshops, we'll have a better idea and come back and talk to you a little more about what that looks like.
And you guys still working on some of the specific cases we've sent to the Senator?
She was still working on that. Yes.
Because I think that's super important. But we, he seemed like he was willing to, with all the FEMA issues down in Florida. He seemed like it was, it was a good time to bring up some other issues.
Yeah.
And maybe get, maybe give us a little more time in the process. So.
Yeah. We've also had just a handful of floodplain applications coming through recently, some development floodplain that we haven't been having to deal with. So this is bringing up a lot of those questions, which I think would be helpful on that. So. I'm onsite. Actually had a pretty busy month compared with the last year. They had 18 applications, residential authorization to connect and construction permits were the higher of the two. They, those are also related to development. So your authorization to connect is going to be something where you're adding on, you're adding bedrooms or you're replacing a home. And so they're having to verify that the subject system will work for what you're intending to do. They also, over this first quarter, similar to last, which is good to see. And then in coenforcement, we received five new cases in September, closed seven. So that's good. Looks like the building has actually been kind of the higher caseload and violations recently. So.
Is that digging, Randy?
So those are things, you know, building without permit type work. So other than that, that's about it for the department. Any questions for us?
Nope. I sure appreciate the update.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. You're welcome. Will? On the schedule?
Yeah, so Sarah and I wanted to discuss with the board the holiday schedule and the board's meeting schedule for 2025. We're getting to the point where we're starting to need to think about scheduling stuff in January. So we wanted to kind of firm up the dates for your guys' meeting schedule for next year. One of the challenges right out of the gate in January is the first Wednesday is New Year's Day. So it's a holiday. So you'll see that on the proposed schedule, the first meeting, regular meeting will be the second Wednesday technically in January. So January will be a little bit different than how we've done our regular meeting schedules in the past. And then we'll get back on into our regular schedule starting in February, but we wanted to run these dates by you. See if there were any, any suggested changes.
The second Wednesday, not the second.
Second Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, we have five Wednesdays safely in January. So it actually helps us. So that first Wednesday will be our bye week, which is technically New Year's. So we'll have a regular work, regular work just for January. But then February, like Will was saying, we normally do our regular sessions the first and third Wednesday. That's why January is different this year, but then we will go back to that following February. So in the packet, you have, there is information about the regular session schedule, the work session schedule. We do also have the holidays for 2025 listed out there too. Other than the New Year's Day, I think we're actually pretty, we're okay this next year. We don't have anything that falls on a Wednesday. So we don't have any weird holidays to work through.
Okay.
And then the other thing, which should be the first item in the in this agenda item in the packet, is the remaining dates for 2024. So we have some November, we have a regular session for November 6th. We have our work session for number 15th. We do have a special session on November 14th. So I don't remember what that was titled.
It's a joint work session with the planning commission to discuss the TSP. So the consultant will, will come to town and want to, want to present, present that, have a conversation with both the planning commission and the board on where we are with the TSP.
The following week is AOC. So you guys will be of course out for that week. The following week after that would be our regular session. However, that is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So there, we wanted to have a discussion if we wanted to cancel that meeting entirely from that November 27.
I think I'm going to be out of town. So I don't know. I mean, I guess you guys. Suzie?
Do you have a preference, Suzie? You're muted again.
You're muted again.
Are you playing chess?
Yes, I am totally fine with Brian and and Seth. Did you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I still can't figure out, even with your toggle thing, how I can get a video, but. I guess you don't have to look at me.
Your chess piece moved on the table.
Yeah, you're playing a a whole different level of chess.
Yes.
I guess. I don't know. I've tried everything.
So the the only other thing I would mention on this, and this isn't anything that needs to be decided right now, but I remember when I was. Um. Working here in two thousand nineteen, the board made an effort to go out to Plana in the fall, and I I understand we may have some technology issues. Now that we didn't have them, because there are requirements that we we make those meetings available. Uh, online, but if that's something you'd like us to explore, um, for doing next fall, uh, we can we can look into whether or not. We can make the technology work for a meeting out there, because it's, I think it's been a few years, probably before COVID since.
I would also throw out there, what if we did one in Juniper Canyon, the fire hall?
We can, we like, we don't need to make a.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. I just look into it. I just see if the technology's there and available.
Yeah. I think I think it's nice to be able to get out.
I mean, not to, not to just pile on, but I mean, I think if we hit those three places, I think that would mean a lot to citizens.
Yeah. Well, happy to look into it.
I think I know the community hall, uh, would love to host us.
Yeah, so we can look into, you know, what our options are for doing some remote meeting.
Yeah. Great. Anything else? We don't need, that's all set for the meeting.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion.
Uh, in the past for the meetings, I think the county has adopted an order. Um, I don't know if that's necessarily necessary, but that's certainly been the practice, so. I think that there's something, just ideally, we get an order and maybe have it on the agenda for sometime in December.
Yeah, for for both the holiday schedule and and the media schedule.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Um, the next one's mine. Do you want to give an overview, Eric, or you want me to just, I I don't think we need to get. Too in depth here. I I think, you know, it's sounds like there was concerns. Uh, by the media, kind of review about uh how the planning commission went through the process of appointing.
Fair board.
The fair board went through the process of appointing. Uh. One of the members. Uh, I don't think there's any concern about the the actual person that was added more in the process. And uh, I I think it would just serve the community best with transparency to restart the process. Talking to Eric, it sounds like. People on the fair board don't disagree with that, so I I know it's really their decision, but I think it would be worth, you know. Sending down a request to them to go through the process again. And um hopefully they can start over and we can we can get it lined up. There was a couple of other things that I think we're currently fixing on that with uh. Ensuring kind of what Will was talking about to have uh the ability for remote people to be in the meeting and a couple of other different things, so uh. I don't know. Does that take a motion to make that request, or can we just? Have you passed on to them? We would, we would really appreciate if they were start, they would start over the process.
Well, I guess uh the first question is, you know, how would the other commissioners?
Yeah, I guess that's. Brian?
Yeah, no, I'm I'm good with it. I'm familiar with what's going on, so. Probably if it's late and.
Yeah.
You know, transparency.
Suzie?
Yes, I agree that we need to just start all over and do it the right way. I totally agree. So if you need a motion, I make a motion that we restart the. Nomination for fair board.
It'd be more request them to do it.
Okay, whatever we need, but yes, we need to start it all over.
Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Second.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
Our motion?
Yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I. Okay, and I think we just have Eric pass along our our thoughts on it. I don't think we need to. Write a big letter and what do you think, Eric, beside?
Um, so I can forward that to the uh. And. If they'd like someone to make a presentation, kind of do so. Yeah.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, now on to um our second. Public comment period. Do you folks want to say something or are you just here to hang out?
Just here to hang out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Oh, Tim?
The conversation, good morning. The conversation about the fair board made me think about. Uh. The timeline for county advertising open board positions across all of its advisory boards and committees.
Uh huh.
Natural resource committee will have. Uh, two positions whose terms expire. Uh, and will need reappointed in December, January, but. Um, I just wondered about public notices for all those things, what the timeline might be.
So Tim, I can follow up with you on that.
Thanks.
Robert?
Uh, William, you have anything? Yeah, a couple, a couple of quick things. Um, just wanted to note that the um that at the next Friday, uh, we're gonna be hosting a candidate for the HR director position, so. We have some um. Some some meetings scheduled, some interviews scheduled for that, and uh we're gonna try to do a reception. Later in the afternoon, because that position is so important for all employees in the county, and we want to give anybody an opportunity to. To meet or who's interested, so we'll do a sort of open house reception towards the end of the day, so we'll have some more details on that hopefully later this week, but I just wanted to note that. Um. And I also wanted to note that the conversation regarding. The septic issue up at the landfill is ongoing, and I think um I want to just turn it over to John to um discuss that, where we are with that at this point.
I agree. Jackie, over here too.
And before we do that, I want to make a statement for the record. Um, I was approached by the staff about this. And my potential interest as a private landowner in my personal capacity to use our land. Do for the application of the septic. Um. Things are still in preliminary aspect of it. I don't know much about it, but uh I haven't been privy to any confidential information because of the potential conflict. Um, I'm recusing myself from any uh, we're trained from participating. And going with some of these. It doesn't sound like playing this late and I'm interested in not in there, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, so yeah, it's a quick update. Um, some background is uh. Our our previous provider who did all the land application for the septic waste in the county, um, Two Springs Ranch, they sent some termination notice. Effective Christmas Eve of this year, uh, the process to transfer the the DEQ permit is timely. Um, it takes time to get that thing done, and we need to have a new place. Ready to go by Christmas Eve. Um, so time is tight. In the past week, we have met with um the STEM camps, who are the owners of Muck Septic, and so we talked about last time. Uh, they have been scouring the county, um, and I think even looking at Jefferson County for potential uh sites to land apply this, and every landowner they've approached has given them a hard no. Uh, they do have all the machinery and equipment necessary to pull this off. They just didn't, can't find a piece of dirt. Um. We went back over the landfill with the the land that was previously approved back in the early two thousands. Uh, it's kind of piecemeal. There's a little chunk here, a little chunk there. Um, it's definitely not enough to serve the county with the volumes that we need to have. Um. The DEQ representative Carl Makepeace came down on Mon- was Monday, right? Monday, and he walked the site and uh talked to Jackie for a while. Um. Commissioner Barney, so he has a pretty good understanding of um. What's going on, and he's gonna try to fast track our permit once we get it done. Uh, he'd said basically that the the drop dead date for us to have everything in order um and getting it to him is. Like mid, early November, so we basically have to um get all our Ps and Qs in order um by the next work session to get this thing done in time, so we have to move really, really fast. Uh. It's still looking like we're gonna be the ones that hold the permit, um, and Muck Septic uh hopefully will be the one that can do the handling. Uh, we're still talking to the city about them possibly taking some of it. Um. There's a possibility for some to go to the pine if absolutely necessary, uh, but uh the definitely the optimal solution would be for us to find a landowner here in the county. Uh.
Commissioner Hermak, I think. How many acres is?
So it depends. It's it's it depends on uh if it's irrigated land, and it depends on the nitrogen needs of the land, so the more that the land needs nitrogen for the crops.
Yeah.
The more you can apply. Um, and so if you're just doing dry land sage brush, you need a lot more land, but we need basically, uh, I think a minimum of four hundred acres. Um. Which is not easy to find, someone that has four hundred acres is one that uh gave up. So. Um, Commissioner Hermak, I think you wanted to, did you have any comments about potential farmers or landowners, you thought?
I I just want, I wanted to ask you, if you put it on the irrigated ground and you had the four hundred acres, is that gonna last you a year? How long? Like. Kind of tell me the mechanism for the landowner.
My understanding uh is you basically kind of apply it in cells and that it will go over the months, and so um depending on the crop, depending on if it's for human consumption or or if it's feed for um. Uh, cattle, then it would uh. It has to wait longer, but if it's if it's if it's not a food crop, then I think you just have to wait one year, so you can basically cycle out over the year with each of the cells. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, because see, at Port of Morrow, they have a pivot, and that's what they do. And then they raise it for hay. It can't go for a a human consumption, but it goes for the hay. I just don't have in my mind the timeline like. Like if they're running this, how much land would they use in a month typically? How much did the Two Springs Ranch? Use in a month, and is there the capability as you go across these four hundred acres of raising the hay? There's a lot of. Questions I have, I guess, in that way, and that's, I think I just need to get together with you and ask.
Yeah, I did write those numbers down when I was uh, you know, but I don't remember off the top of my head, um, per. Basically, you know, one twelfth of four hundred acres um per month would be what you need if it's uh the on a twelve month cycle.
Okay, so one twelfth of four hundred, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, John.
I think it's two hundred fifty gallons a month or two hundred fifty gallons.
I think that's what they're applying, but it also depends on, like you said, the nitrogen that's. Can be applied, how the volume that you can apply to. That that amount of land all depends.
And then where do they do the separation, Jackie? Like they're separating liquids from solids, so where does that all happen?
So the local septic companies and portable toilet companies come into the landfill, and we have storage tanks on site that they pump into. Uh, it goes through a screening process to remove all the solids and garbage. And currently, Two Springs treats that. In those tanks there and then land applies it, which if. If the uh Muck takes that over, it would be the same process.
Okay, do we own the, we own the tanks and the filtration system?
Yes, we do, and we also have Two Springs willing to donate two additional tanks to the county. Uh, and they also have. A tractor and spreader that they've offered for sale for fifty thousand dollars that. Would come in handy, so if the Mucks chose to purchase that, that would be. A choice they would make.
So basically, as far as their cost, we have all that. If we were down the road to go into this business, we would have to get a tractor and a spreader, and then obviously some bottom hoppers to haul it?
Yes.
Okay.
We got our contract portion of that out too, uh, Commissioner, but. But yeah, so um. I guess the intent today is, I guess you're you're blessed to keep moving forward. We need to, I definitely need to contact the STEM camps uh and let them know that we we may have a landowner, and then um I should probably put the those two parties in touch to see what kind of deals. Can be negotiated. I I don't know. Um. I don't know exactly what it's gonna look like yet, so it's gonna take some conversations with the parties, but uh hope to have something back to you next week and then and then ready to put pen to paper the week after that, so we can get the applications into DEQ in time for the uh December twenty fourth.
Perfect.
Thank you, John.
Do you need a motion?
I don't think Florida's doing the same thing we've been doing. Keep getting it ready. But we're gonna pull this off. That's good news.
Great. Uh, anything else, Will?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other commissioner, any commissioner updates?
Yeah.
Um, I've got one. So uh like I talked about at the uh talking to the Senator. About um the floodplains, I also brought up the. Maganese uh north of town, and I talked to him about uh appreciating him pushing things so far, but that we really need to find those federal dollars. For the the bigger testing. Um, I think we all know that they uh agreed to the more localized. Uh, testing of the homes, which is a good step in the right direction, but it's not. What we, I I think what we really need is the long term testing process to prove where the Maganese is coming from and what the cause of it is. Um, I also last. Friday met with the governor and again spoke to her about. We need to, thank you for getting this first part done, but we need to get the the bigger. Testing done and said, you know, again, we've talked to the feds, we're talking to you. It's not really. We don't really care where you get the money. You just need to find money to to move this forward, so. Uh, she seemed to be aware of the situation and. Just kind of continuing to hammer away the state and feds to get the dollars. Suzie, you got anything?
No, other than Friday, uh Greg Swalen of DEQ was at the Associate's uh real estate office. They gave him an office. And I went in and visited with him, and he was taking people from the water contamination area. They were coming in and filling out the forms so that they could start the testing. So we visited for a little bit, and then some more people came in, so I left, but yeah, they've they've started at least that process.
Good. I see a letter from City of Redmond on here. Is that something that we want to, is that somebody, is that me? It's not me, but I don't know about it, but Brian, Suzie, is that?
No. I think that letter Kelly Cofield spent on the uh Kirk County Representative on the airport, Redmond Airport. You know, and he has agreed to continue with that and.
Perfect. Okay, yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. Do we need, do we need to uh?
I think they're looking for reappointment before the end of the year. I think Kelly's term for that advisory committee ends out at the end of this year, so we do have time if we need to have anything signed or brought forth. Yeah, on that.
I can check and see what they need. I I'm assuming just a acknowledgement um. That that I'll proceed.
Kelly, do you want to proceed?
Yeah, yeah, I've been on there a long time. Um, I enjoy it, so yeah.
Okay. Alrighty, I wa- I wonder why we can't just go ahead and make a motion for an acknowledgement for Kelly to proceed.
Yeah, I think so. If you make it, I'll second it and.
Okay, I just made it, so uh you need a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
Well, thank you, Kelly, for your continued, as long as I'll have you.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Alrighty, uh, anything else before we move on to executive session? Okay, the Kirk County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two E. To conduct deliberations versus everybody to carry out labor negotiations. Under ORS one nine two six six zero two E for the purpose conducted deliberations versus designated everybody to negotiate the property transactions. ORS one nine two six six zero two F. To consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, ORS one nine two six six zero two H. Consulting with counsel concerning illegal rights and dues of a public body with regard to current litigation, litigation likely filed under ORS. One nine two six six zero two A. To consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. For representatives and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, all in room, get out and trust the room representation.
Except for.
Oh, sorry, except for two D. I'm usually pretty good about that. Thank you, Eric. Except for two D. Oh, sorry, except for two D. I'm usually pretty good about that, thank you, Eric. Except for two D. Representatives and news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except in state and general sessions previously announced. Their decision may be made in the executive session. Be the executive session when we return to open session, welcome the audience back into the room. Kirk County Board of Commissioners now will now leave executive session under O R S one nine two six six zero two B. To conduct deliberations persons designated by the government to carry on labor negotiations. Uh, under O R S one nine two six six zero two E for the purpose conducting deliberations persons designated by the government to negotiate real property transactions under O R S one nine two six six zero two F to consider information on records that are exempt from law from public inspection under O R S one nine two six six zero two H. Consultant with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation, litigation likely filed under O R S one nine two six six zero two A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, individual agent. Representatives and the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, except for under O R S one nine two six six zero two D. All other members of the audience, representatives and news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general sessions previously announced, their decision may be made in the executive session. Be the executive session. We return to open session, welcome the audience back into the room. Hey, can we just start with one?
Um, it might just be easiest if we go in order of how they were discussed, so for executive session item number three, that was called under two E for real property. Based on the discussion today, it sounds like that motion would be to approve the addendum in the counter offer as discussed in the executive session. So.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
For executive session, item number two, that was also under two E for the property transactions. Sounds like a motion is, uh, a motion to approve release modification as discussed in the executive session. So.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
Let's see. And for.
Remembered with me, um, recommend a motion to approve, uh, the, or to execute the lease with the judicial apartments, um, as discussed in the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Um, executive session number five, that was under two H. Um, or C B, I'm sorry, two F, two Foxtrot. Um, looking my notes here. Based on the discussion, I think, uh, the motion would be a motion to request, uh, Kirk County's individualized data from, um, Cascades. Um, and then this probably isn't part of the notion, but then we start working on the, um, announces, so. A motion to request the county's individualized information from Cascades.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
On my two Hs, those are just kind of staying the course, no motions.
Right.
Necessary. And then. We have seven, yeah, we have.
D B, uh, so that would be a motion to prepare, uh, the response to the counterparty as discussed in the exact decision. So moved.
Second. Oh, sorry.
That's okay, second, whatever.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
And then for the two A, motion to direct staff to proceed as directed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Suzie. Have a great trip.
Yeah, fun, Suzie.
I will, I will. Alrighty, tomorrow is supposed to be eighty. What is it today in Prangal?
Uh, our, our Indian summer ran out.
Didn't have to scrape the car this morning though, so that was good.
Oh, I did.
You did?
Forty-eight right now here.
Forty-eight now, it's gonna be forty-seven in Randy tomorrow.
Okay, no, seven, or eighty tomorrow and eighty on Friday. And I get to go watch football and, and basketball with the boys, so it'll be fun.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Does Richard need some
Guidance?
Or do you know what your direction is?
I will visit with John and find out what, what's needed there, and, cause I think you've got everything. If you need us to help with getting the information from department heads, we can help you there, or, um, you can take off and, and do that, you know, yourself, I don't know. Um, but yeah, if, we can talk with John and everything, so.
All right, okay, anybody else before I adjourn? During.